We're returning to open session 6:48 PM. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. You ready?
I am ready.
Joe? I think we have one.
Yes. July 11th?
Yep. I'm ready to take a motion.
Is Bill ready?
Bill, are you ready?
I'm making a motion. I'm ready. I'm making a motion for the minutes dated July 11, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is proclamation for Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day.
I don't see Keith. I'm not sure if Kevin is here.
Okay. Should we? He's joining, right? Okay, we'll wait for Keith. Do you want to grab Russ and just do that quickly?
I can. I think just come back to it.
Come back to it.
They're prepared to, because Matt's not on either.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is joint session with the Planning Board to discuss MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning. Kevin, I'll pass it over to you to call your meeting to order.
Thank you, Liz. This is Kevin Allison, the Chair of the Planning Board this year. It is 6:50 on July 26, calling the meeting of the Planning Board to order. First order business is to adopt the open meeting law provisions that the Select Board adopted at the start of the meeting, so we'll formally do that. And next is to do, I've done a new person meeting in a while, a quick roll call vote for attendance. Some of our board is kind of sitting in the audience, so you guys can call yourselves out, state your names, and the cameras will see, so everyone can see you there.
Gordon Carr here. Eric Johnson here. Tracy Schreiber here.
And Rita, are you there on Zoom? And we have Rita De Silva on Zoom. You're muted, Rita.
I'm here. Thank you.
Perfect.
Excellent. Welcome. Great. I'll turn it over to Emily to do the presentation.
Sorry, Emily Wentworth. I'm the Community Planning Director, and we're just going to walk through, hopefully a not very lengthy, presentation about MBTA communities. Do I have the ability to screen share? Great. Okay. Okay, so this is now, I think, our third public meeting with the Select Board, and we're joined by the Planning Board, on the MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning requirements. So I won't belabor a lot of this, but I think it would be useful to provide kind of a quick overview of what those are. So there is a new section of the zoning act, Section 3A of Chapter 40A, that requires MBTA communities, and there's 175 of us, to have at least one zoning district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, and that it meets other criteria set forth in the statute. Those include that the district has a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, and we'll see some slides about what that feels and looks like in a few minutes. The district has to be not more than a half mile from a commuter rail station or a ferry terminal. Those are applicable here in Hingham. Some other communities also have bus stations or subway stations. And that there be no age restrictions within the district, so the housing, we cannot exclude family housing, so you can't limit the number of bedrooms, et cetera, in order to reduce impacts on your schools. Those are kind of the nuts and bolts of the statute. The Department of Housing and Community Development at the time, now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, then created guidelines to help communities create this zoning that introduces a number of new concepts. You'll notice that the little blurb at the top here that kind of summarizes what the Section 3A requires, doesn't, it speaks to zoning capacity as opposed to housing production, but the theory is that housing demand has outpaced supply, in part because of more restrictive zoning requirements, and that has, you know, influenced the cost of housing. However, the statute doesn't actually have a requirement that we require affordability. The final guidelines issued in October, however, did allow communities to impose an inclusionary zoning standard of 10%, and if we're able to prove that it's economically feasible, we have the ability to potentially increase that up to 20%. So minimally, we can offset any impacts on our subsidized housing inventory if we were to create such an inclusionary zoning standard. Another concept introduced by the guidelines is kind of a definition of what is a reasonable number of multifamily housing units. So the guidelines impose a minimum district unit capacity that's based on the overall number of housing units in each community, and it varies based on the type of commuter rail community that you are. For Hingham, we are categorized as a commuter rail community, so we're supposed to have zoning that would allow for at least 15% of our overall number of housing units. And you can see on the chart at the bottom here that in 2020, our number of housing units was 9,930. 15% of that is 1,490. So if we were to comply with the statute and the guidelines, we would have to create zoning that would allow for somewhere just under 1,500 units. They also, the guidelines also define what this reasonable size is. So the statute was sort of broad and just said it had to be a reasonable size. The guidelines say the minimum land area and its developable land area has to be 50 acres. That's based on the half-mile radius around each transit station. It's 10%. So that's what they came up with. And then I'll just add here too that not all, even though the statute says that the districts can be no more than a half mile from transit, in fact, the guidelines only require that 70%, 75%, excuse me, of our district be located within that half-mile radius. So up to 25% could be located anywhere in town. So those are the requirements. It's a mandate. So the statute says all MBTA communities shall create these zoning districts. The consequences of not complying, so if Town Meeting, a discretionary body, were not to adopt by right multifamily zoning, is spelled out in the statute. There are three different state funding sources that the town would no longer be eligible for. One is the Housing Choice Initiative Program. There's also this local capital projects fund that actually is funding for housing authorities specifically as opposed to the municipality. And then finally, the MassWorks Infrastructure Grant Program. So that's what the statute says. The guidelines issued by the DHCD said that it additionally could take any of its grant programs into consideration. So compliance might be a factor in their decision-making for any discretionary funding source. In terms of impacts on Hingham, just to give you a sense as to how often or frequently we've accessed these particular programs, the ones laid out in the statutes and then mentioned in the guidelines, the Housing Choice Capital Grant, we are a Housing Choice community, we've accessed $140,000 from that program in recent years. In the discretionary bucket, DHCD awarded the town a $60,000 Rapid Recovery Planning Grant a couple of years ago. MassWorks, we haven't accessed in the last five years, but in the past, we have been awarded significant amount of money from that program, more than $1 million for Shipyard Drive reconstruction, again, more than $1 million for downtown streetscape improvements, and then just under $1 million for Derby Street traffic light installation. So that one has the potential to be the most impactful if we were not able to comply with the statute. And then finally, in March, the Attorney General's Office issued an advisory that says MBTA communities cannot avoid their obligations under the law by foregoing these funding sources. In addition, the advisory cautions that communities that fail to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action, and communities that fail to comply with the law's requirements also risk liability under federal and state fair housing laws. So there's that weighing out there as well. So our station areas and the locations that we considered for potential districts, they include our local transit stations, the Hingham Ferry, West Hingham Commuter Rail Station, and Nantasket Junction Commuter Rail Station. We also have some limited station area from the East Weymouth Commuter Rail Station as well as the Cohasset Commuter Rail Station. I mentioned a couple of slides ago that 75% of the district has to be located within one of these circles, but up to, again, 25% could be located elsewhere in town. The guidelines, again, require that we have to have 50 acres of developable land, and that excludes all public land, so anything owned by the town or the state, any right-of-way, so also often owned by the town, sometimes private. That doesn't count towards our minimum land area, wetlands, floodplain, water bodies, et cetera. So when we start to consider those limitations, you can see some of these district areas that it would be challenging to get a conforming district locked into. So you can see around Cohasset, we've got water bodies, floodway, some public land. If we look towards West Hingham, all this green, this is the South Shore Country Club, there are restrictions associated with that, Bear Cove Park, there's floodway, and then we know by driving around town that all the other parcels in that area are really small. So it would be, you know, it would be challenging to create a district in this area. Nantasket Junction, we also have some conservation land, some wetland resource areas, water bodies, that would make this radius or transit station area challenging. Practically, we also know that this area and parts of the roadways in particular, like Rockland Street, have been identified as at risk from sea level rise, that in particular was in the Kleinfelder study. So there is a combination of, you know, legal reasons and practical reasons why some of these areas may not be appropriate for multifamily zoning. I will say that we don't have to create only one district. The state allows you to have multiple districts, but at least one of those sub-areas, if you were to have multiple, has to consist of a minimum of 25 acres or 50% of the overall district, whichever is greater, I guess, and that no portion can count towards your minimum land area if it's less than five acres. So those are some of the additional constraints that we had to consider. Here's just a slide showing where our existing housing development is. I'll point out on this bar chart that the town, the town's proportion of multifamily housing has actually, that consists of 10 or more units, has actually outpaced the state's proportion. We exceed what the average for the state is. So you can see, we're building multifamily housing that's, you know, of a significant density, and much of that is within our transit station areas. However, it just, it was not allowed by right. So everything that we've achieved in terms of housing growth in these areas, for the most part, has been permitted through a special permit process or through a comprehensive permit process. Let me see if we need to say, I guess, I will note, and we've got the number here in a couple of different places, one in the legend, but that's pretty tiny to see, but also up here, that within these station areas, we've permitted 1,481 units that have in fact been built, they're on the ground. That number is very, very close to our minimum unit capacity of 1,490. So in many ways, the town has really achieved the spirit of, you know, the statute, the law, on its own. This is just, you know, a primer on what density is, since the statute requires a minimum of 15 units per acre. This is how we calculate it. It's simply a means of showing how concentrated or spread out housing development is in a particular area, so it's always the number of units divided by the number of acres. In terms of our existing density on the ground, MHP provides these diagrams that could be helpful just in, you know, letting you know how dense a particular area is already. Around Cohasset, we, there's an average density of under one unit per acre, 0.4 units per acre. And just so you can see, the portion of that that's in Hingham is this kind of pie shape right here. We had mentioned previously that it's pretty limited in terms of its area, but what has been built out is, you know, not, it's certainly not meeting the 15-unit-per-acre standard. In East Weymouth, it's a little bit denser, there's an average density of 2.6 units per acre, but still nowhere near the 15 units-per-acre minimum. Here's the municipal boundary. So on the Hingham side of the line, the majority of that development falls into the least dense category. And, whoop, sorry. These look so similar. These are actually two different train stations. These two are in Hingham proper. Nantasket Junction, like Cohasset, we are seeing an average density of less than one unit per acre. And near West Hingham, there's an average density of just over one unit per acre. So MHP unfortunately stopped there. They did these analyses for commuter rail, buses, et cetera. They did not complete it for ferries, so we're going to go through a few different slides to show you a different perspective on density. So right within a half mile of the MBTI parking lot, we have Hingham Woods, which is 277 units on just shy of 60 acres of land, which equates to 4.79 units per acre. Just next door, Beals Cove Village is 198 units on 27.8 acres, which equals just over seven units per acre. And you can kind of see the, you know, the massing of these, this type of density, we're looking at two-story building, townhome-style development. Across 3A, Avalon at the Hingham Shipyard, there's a multifamily building off of Fitzroy that consists of 91 units on three acres. That's a 30-unit-per-acre development. We're now looking at four-story buildings. The Avalon Residences right on 3A, 319 Lincoln Street, has 190 units on 3.8 acres, which equals 50 units per acre. At that point, we're starting to see a five-story building, so you can get a sense as to what, you know, zoning parameters we might need to be thinking about. Behind these, on the right-hand side, is the townhouse portion of the Avalon at the shipyard. It's 144 units on 7.9 acres, or eight, so that's 18 units per acre. Along the waterfront, Hewitt's Landing is 150 units on 21 acres, or 7.3 units per acre. We fleshed out a few more details on the Cove. This is off of Beal Street, 300 and 350 Beal Street. It consists of 220 units over 9.83 acres. That's a density of 22.4 units per acre. Some of the other features or zoning type of parameters for this property includes a building coverage of 16%, a Florida area ratio of 0.74. It's four stories. It's got a height that's just over 60 feet. The parking ratio is below our standard of two, oh, excuse me, two spaces per unit, and instead what was allowed is 1.55 spaces per unit. This was a comprehensive permit. 25% of the units are affordable. There are also some recreational amenities on site, and some landscape buffers were built in for neighbors. So these are the type of things, before we visit, again, we're going to be developing all of these types of requirements for whichever district or districts you guide us toward. What we'd like to offer as potential districts would be the ones that you see in front of you, in part, these focus on areas that we've, the town, has already permitted housing development for, so impart the zoning, would simply recognize the efforts that the town has already gone through to encourage housing growth in appropriate locations. This is not only next to public transportation, but is served by public sewer, has water, you know, plenty of traffic circulation, options, shopping, et cetera, open space. So, so these include some of the housing developments we just went through. Here's Hewitt's Landing, the Avalon 1, we call it, and then the Avalon 2. In combination, these parcels would represent a sub-district of 35 acres. So it meets or exceeds that 25-acre minimum. Across the street and just touching the radius from the Hingham Ferry Terminal is the Cove, and we went through some of the details associated with that. We've confirmed with DHCD that this is, qualifies as station area, so this property would count towards our 75% locational requirement, and as we noted on the prior slide, is just under 10 acres in size. So we're now up to about 45 acres of our 50-acre minimum. So those are some options to consider. For the reasons that we kind of broadly went through about limitations in other station areas, we then looked outside of a station area for properties that may be better suited for housing development. One of those areas is off of French and Hobart Street. You can see this aerial image of it on the left-hand side. It's right now being used as like a contractor's yard with heavy equipment operations on site, but otherwise, the surrounding neighborhood is really residential in character. So we thought, even though it's outside the half-mile radius, just barely, from East Weymouth, and also not all that far from West Hingham, that this might be an appropriate area to also rezone. Size-wise, it's just over eight acres, so it also meets the five-acre minimum. If these were the only districts/sub-districts that the town were to look at, the combined district size would be 53.29 acres, so it would exceed the 50-acre minimum developable area. This is finally just a quick update on our overall timeline for compliance, so you can see, identified by check marks, the steps that we've already gone through. We're right now in that bottom box. So prior to December 31 of 2024, the town would have to adopt this zoning and submit a final compliance application to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. In order to meet that deadline, we would first have to draft the zoning, submit a compliance model, or complete a compliance model, to show how the districts that we've identified meet all of the standards in the statute and the guidelines, and then initiate our actual zoning amendment process. Internally or locally, we have a December 1 deadline for warrant articles, so we'd have to work toward that date. Between January and March, the Planning Board would then hold public hearings on the proposed zoning in order, and then make a recommendation to Town Meeting in April of 2024, and that would position us to be in compliance by the December 31, 2024 deadline. I'm sorry, that was a lot of talking.
Thank you.
That's what we've got. So we're hoping tonight we can get a level of comfort with the districts that we've identified, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have about other options that we moved away from.
Excellent. Thank you, Emily. A considerable amount of work has already gone into this project, and that's obvious, so thank you. And just as a reminder to Emily's point, we're not voting this evening. This is a preliminary discussion about the districts and kind of the approach. There will be many more meetings and many more opportunities, I'm sure, to share feedback and ask questions. At this point, I will open it up to the Select Board members to ask questions or make comments, and then turn it over to you, Kevin, for the Planning Board to do the same. We do have a big agenda, and I want to make sure that everybody that wants to speak has an opportunity to speak, so I will respectfully ask that we take about three minutes each or less and try to get as much information on the table as we can. And again, there will be many more opportunities, but I'll let you start, Joe.
I just want to make, is Bill on? I'm not sure I can see him.
I think he's right at the top.
Oh, great. Okay. Good. So Emily, just procedurally, before the Town Meeting votes on proposed zoning amendments, would that language be precleared with the state so that we would know that what we voted actually meets?
Yeah, we have, Susan can probably answer that in more detail, but they do offer a preliminary review.
Okay, great.
So to Emily's point, you can get a preliminary review, but they will not give it as a approval or sign-off before it's adopted. One of the conversations that I have started with the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, which has to review all zoning amendments, is the ability to insert, if the town wished to, a provision that stated that it does not take effect unless and until it receives the certificate of compliance from DHCD. Because the way it's structured right now, although you can get this preliminary review by DHCD, it is not definitive, and if the town were to go through all this, Town Meeting adopt it, and then DACD or EOL, EOLHC, yes, I'm just going to call it DACD, for any reason has a problem with it, now the zoning is on the books, and, but yet the town is not meeting its statutory obligation. So we are looking at a way to structure the zoning that makes its effectiveness contingent on DACD approving it.
Great.
Okay, good.
To what extent are private property owners notified of what's going on, proposed zoning, so they have an opportunity to give input about, you know, how this may potentially affect them as well as neighbors?
Yeah. So the statute, whether it's related to multifamily by right zoning or any zoning, doesn't require that the community notice individual property owners. Instead, when the Planning Board opens its public hearings, there's a newspaper, Le Lad, that goes out. As a matter of practice, particularly with floodplain zoning and some other zoning, we have been reaching out to property owners and sending them a written notice. Already in this process, we've been having conversations with potentially affected property owners so that they're aware of, you know, the public discussion. I think something that is bringing a level of comfort to I think something that is bringing a level of comfort to them is that these would be proposed as overlay districts, and the underlying zoning that potentially they've already developed their property under would remain in place. So we wouldn't be making anything non-conforming by adopting potential overlay districts.
And I think as a practical matter, Hingham has been really in the vanguard. We have implemented, as you said, either through special permit or through the 40B process, the type of housing that the state is now requiring by right, but we've actually done it through another way. In many ways, I think what is going to be proposed is simply codifying for compliance with the new state law what the town of Hingham has done all along. So I think it's very, we can pat ourselves collectively on the back for having been ahead of the game in making, making sure that we're doing the right thing. So really, thank you for all the work, and not just you. I know it's, you've got your support team and the Planning Board, so, so thank you. No other questions.
Excellent. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
I have just a question. So, you know, given our, our goal as a ward and as a community to create more affordable housing opportunities, did I, am I reading that slide right, that affordable housing initiatives are allowed in this statute but not required?
Yep, that is correct. So as a base, and this came out only in October, the state allows communities to adopt a 10% inclusionary zoning requirement, and it's only if we go through, you know, an analysis of the economics that we might be able to go higher than that, up to a max of 20%. We did submit a grant application to engage a professional to help us with the economic feasibility analysis. Those awards were supposed to have been announced by June 30th. They haven't yet, but we believe it will be in the very near term.
Great. Thank you, Emily. And my second question is, I know you listed, you know, kind of the stakes in jeopardy here of us not adopting this. Do we, are we able to quantify a total number in the balance in terms of state funding, or is that too much of a moving target to?
Yeah, we'll do more analysis. We initially had just done a five-year lookback, and so we had only accessed approximately $200,000 during that five-year period. But MassWorks and its predecessor, the P Wed Grants, we have used in, you know, over the last decade or more, approximately $3 million from that program. And as we look to build out potentially South Hingham, that's certainly a funding program that would be very useful. They don't have a cap on the amount of a single grant. Some communities have been able to get grants for, you know, $3 million, $4 million, $6 million at a time, so it's, it's a, an interesting program.
And I, just to add to that, Bill, I think the state is suggesting that quite apart from the, the grants listed in the statute, that the state will be using compliance or non-compliance as a guideline in issuing other, you know, in qualifying other town, towns for other grants. So there is more to this than meets the eye.
Right, and that, and that's really changed, I think, since this was first proposed. So that's, thank you for being so comprehensive about that. It's not just those few grants that, that we did take advantage of in the last five years, but it sounds like it's much bigger than that. So, Bill, any other questions?
Yeah, and obviously, it's, we can't do this tonight, but it would be interesting to know, you know, what the cost to our infrastructure demand would be in relation to the money that is, for example, sewer capacity, school capacity, and other, you know, infrastructure issues that we would have to put in place to service one of these high-density housing areas. But I was, can't do it tonight, but Emily and Susan, very much appreciate your, your brief tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll pass it over to you, Kevin.
Thank you, Liz. With that, I'll go to members of my board. Gary, please, go ahead.
Do you mind coming? Yeah, the podium, just so they can hear you. Thank you.
Gary, Town North Tech, 1029 Main Street, member of the Planning Board. Two, two questions, I guess, comments too. Right now, we are in safe harbor, which is about 11 and a half percent of our units. We have produced this safe harbor in terms of our special permitting on these projects. We, but this, the minimum requirement here is 15% of the residential units, so there's about a 4% delta there, and I'm just wondering, how do we, are there provisions in this that would, that would essentially maintain that, help us maintain that safe harbor and not in, you know, in sort of the delta between the percentages, put us out of safe harbor and thereby having us, you know, susceptible to unfriendly kinds of developments? That was my first question, and then?
So if we were to impose a 10% inclusionary zoning requirement, anything built out within one of these districts would have no impact on our subsidized housing inventory, right? So the numerator would go up at the same rate as the denominator, in theory. And if we were able to justify a higher level of zoning, it actually would have a positive impact on our subsidized housing inventory.
The other comment is one of looking at the opportunity here in terms of the shipyard. It seems to me that we could do something with this in the shipyard that would be involving more of a mixed-use type of a concept, where we could have, you know, additional housing activities, but then that could support other kinds of service industries. And we perhaps could maybe take a look. I'm intrigued at what's happening in Hanover Crossing in terms of how they've used housing as a critical economic generator, and also worked that in with the retail and created a synergy there, which is creating a kind of a, I would say, kind of a new kind of a village in that, in that area of the world. And I'm just wondering if, in the thinking here and working with the T and with, with the state relative to this initiative, the T owns a lot of land in the shipyard, and is there a way that we could partner town, state or town-T partnership, where some of that publicly owned land, for example, a 2,500 square space parking lot, which is not really very sustainable in terms of heat islands, could, could there potentially be a vision where that could, we could create a garage, a small garage, that could be surrounded by residences and thereby kind of hidden, which might free up this large island of spaces to other kinds of more creative uses that would be more economically good for the town, but also sustainable in their, in their practice? So I don't know what kinds of opportunities we have in that vein. We could look at them, but just as a suggestion.
Yeah, there's definitely an opportunity to have that dialogue. It's probably a longer-term effort because we can't use any public land, like the MBTA parking lot, towards our minimum land area unless the, the public agency goes through a formal process of declaring the property surplus and available for housing development. So, you know, that's something that the town could discuss with the MBTA down the road. I mean, this, this is part of the zoning act, so every time we have town meeting, we have the ability to consider modifications to the zoning map.
Great, and I just wanted to thank you for the effort and the initiative. I think this is a great outline for a good, good ongoing discussion. Great, thanks again.
Thank you, Gary.
Gordon, Tracy. I guess I want to thank you for all that work as well. It's an extraordinary amount of research to try to figure out a pretty complex piece of legislation with some little goalposts moving here and there, it looks like, shall we say. So I guess, but the one question I have, and it may not be answerable, is on the shipyard in particular, right, we're looking at that as a potential TOD district, and will be making, as Susan suggested, some potentially permanent zoning changes in that area. We're 18 months away from the general manager of the MBTA proposing the complete elimination of ferry service permanently, right? That was December 2021, right? They were in a financial crisis. So I just want us to be cognizant of what happens should that prospect come again or actually come to fruition, right? It is, I don't, I don't think it's a remote possibility that the T might face economic crises at some point and have to make difficult decisions. What does that mean for us, right? Or do we fall out of compliance if the very organization on which the legislation is named chooses to remove that service, right? And do we put some provision in there that should that happen, I don't know whether there's a trigger mechanism for us to revisit it? I think, and I say that only cautionary because, first of all, I think it's an important service, and I think it would help with the development of, of housing in that area, right? Because I think that is a great location. I think this is a, a good, a good program for us to follow. But that seems like an externality that we don't control that could affect, you know, how this gets deployed. So I just raised that for, I guess, not necessarily for response now, but for consideration as we go forward.
Well, I mean, just, just to follow up on that, I mean, when the threat, if you will, happened before, and the town was very active, and as you know, our state rep was very active in making sure that the T did not discontinue ferry service. And in fact, to the extent that we have structures there, that's an added argument against the T for, you know, they-
Point taken. Yeah, yeah, no, and I didn't, I should have pointed out the, the effort of the, of the town and others to push back against that proposal. And, yeah, you make a great point, right? If we actually follow through on this, and there is some housing development built specifically for it, that that would be a deterrent or insurance policy or whatever you might have. So that's a, that's an excellent perspective.
But I, but I will follow up on your comment with Joe Moschino, because I think that's an excellent point.
In, in their defense, I probably should have done that before coming this evening as well. It's just something that was in my head, but I probably should have spoken to the Senator and Representative beforehand, but it's just something for, I think, for us to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Tracy, if anything, please.
Tracy Schreiber with the Planning Board. Of the 1,483 units that we have already, how many are currently in these zones that we're proposing? Like, what's the delta to hit that 1,490?
Hold on.
It doesn't seem like it's much.
795.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that puts us 700 away in the one site.
That are already there, yeah.
There's nothing there, and then the other one, how much land area is available in the shipyard?
In the shipyard, proper, outside of what we've identified?
Yeah, no, 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 within what's been identified.
Oh, 35 acres.
There's still 35 acres of developable.
That, that is proposed in this new district. So that, those properties are Hewitt's Landing, the Avalon One, and the Avalon Two development. So the zoning that we ultimately will generate, you know, primarily working with the Planning Board, the densities that are proposed, that zoning capacity that we're creating, may not exactly match what's on the ground, but that's okay, as long as what, you know, what we draft allows for at least 15 units per acre. A property owner always has the option of building something lesser.
Okay. All right, that's it.
I think, I think I have, I think I just have a clarification for Tracy's benefit. So, and I, and we've gotten this question, Emily and I, from a lot of residents on different boards and committees, where they come up with this capacity number, which in Hingham is 1,490, but we don't have to actually create that number of housing units. We just need to create zoning that could theoretically allow that many units. So whether, you know, even the, whatever areas, even if the vacant land, you know, the contractor's yard, if they decide they just want to keep it a contractor's yard forever and never sell it, we still remain in compliance because it's within the district. So unlike 40B, which requires the actual creation of the units in order to comply, this, this statute and this zoning, this statute only requires the adoption of the zoning, not the actual construction of any units. So it's, I mean, it doesn't seem very intuitive, but that's, that's how it works.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
And Rita, I think, please, go ahead.
Yep, thank you. So I just had a question. Emily, on your letter to us, you had mentioned 300 Beale Street, but that, but it wasn't in your presentation. Is that off the table or is that still usable?
Nope, that, that is still one of the proposed districts. I can show you it really quick. So it's highlighted in red right here.
Okay.
Yep.
And, oh, okay, that's, and also on the corner of Hobart and French, would you have to redistrict that to comply to put, you know, multi-units in that area?
Yeah.
Because it is a residential area?
Yep. Yeah, right now, it's zoned for single-family housing development. So the proposal is that we would create an overlay district, so the property owner would have the ability to utilize either the existing zoning or the, the by-right multifamily zoning down the road. What, what we envision might be something similar to what's at the other end of French Street, like a Ridgewood Crossing, or something that's of a slightly lower density than some of the development we see around the shipyard.
Okay, how many units would be able to be put on that property?
Well, it depends on what we zone it for. So if we went with just the bare minimum, it would be 120 units if we went with the 15-unit-per-acre requirement. So, you know, we don't have to go with 15, but we can't go with anything less than 15. And, and that doesn't mean that the property owner would in fact choose to build something out at that level. They might choose instead to do something more similar to Hingham Woods, which we saw was under five units per acre, because that could be marketable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I'll just add, my thanks for the work that you guys have done. I personally would be really interested in pursuing kind of the affordability component and what it would take to get us beyond the 10%. To Gary's question, I think anything that drives us further from the 10% threshold is probably positive, both on the, you know, the 40B metric and also just on the affordability metric, which is designed to promote. So I'd be interested to understand a bit more about that, and I think we'll leave it at that, and I guess, if I look forward to, but I'm looking forward to getting into the nitty-gritty of the zoning. Thank you, Liz, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Are there any members of the public that have questions or comments? Do you want to come up, Clark?
Clark Frazier, 50 Bonnybrier Circle. Saying this in, not as a capacity, as a sewer commissioner, but I do have, the French Street site is outside our district, I believe, and because of MWRA restrictions, we cannot plan to extend into there, even if it's unbuildable. But is it possible that if you zone it like that, you'd have an understanding that, I don't know how big where the school buses is, that at some point you could do a land swap and put the school buses where the rocks are and put housing opposite the station?
That's an interesting concept. We, we hadn't considered that, but I guess anything's possible in the future. We'd have to, you know, discuss that with the property owner, obviously, and the school department. And it creates a similar complication to looking at the MBTA parking lot, because the bus depot is publicly owned land, it would be excluded from our minimum land area requirements unless and until we went through that formal process that likely would take some time to negotiate.
Okay, just on the MBTA parking lot, just an observation, it seems like, I don't know who owns the street that is running on the edge of it between it and 3A, that if that street were raised up, which would help the public safety facility a lot, if they could use it, then the MBTA would have essentially access to building a platform over the whole thing, which could be- building a platform over the whole thing, which could be then used as frontage for development. I remember Back Bay, South End, places like that were built by building the roads up and then leaving foundations. So you could leave the parking lot and build a platform over it, but it would be helpful to think about having access. And then the last thing I'll say is that the Weir River Sewer District is basically close to capacity, and that's not a physical thing, that's a contract thing. So it would have to be some communication with Sewer Commission and other entities to try to, when the whole contract comes up for renewal, to change that contract to match what you want in terms of zoning and development.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from people in the room? All right, anyone on Zoom, members of the public that have questions or comments? Anyone do you miss?
I don't.
Do you have what you need, Emily?
I do. Okay. We selected appropriate locations.
Yes, thank you. Great work. So would you want to just briefly outline the next steps?
Yeah, so we are about to dive into the more nitty-gritty aspects of the zoning. So we hope to do that with assistance from the state. We have two different funding requests out there. I had mentioned the one for the professional services to conduct economic feasibility analysis. We also have an application into MHP for technical assistance, specifically related to GIS work. And then I had mentioned this compliance model that we have to complete, that's really, it's the spreadsheet where we do the parcel-by-parcel analysis that's required to demonstrate compliance. We did hear from MHP that we're getting partnered with a consultant, and there are a couple options about which firm that was, but it sounds like that's going to go through, I would think, this week we would know. And the initial option, the firm is going to be ready to go by mid-August. So the timing is pretty good. We're going to be working internally, our team, Susan, Mike, myself, on some of that parcel-by-parcel analysis. The state has released a model bylaw, so we have at least some framework to start drafting the zoning. And we want to start having conversations with the planning board on the, you know, the lock coverage, the parking requirements, all of those standards by early fall, by September, so that we're well-positioned by December 1st to have something workable. And then ideally, during the public hearing process, it's more discussion and not drafting. So those are our next steps by December 1st. Then we have the hearings, then we have town meeting in April.
Great. Excellent. Well, thank you, Emily. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Mike. Anything else? Do you want to adjourn your, you're welcome to stay.
7:41 PM. Might be a motion that we adjourn this meeting of the planning board. Thank you. A quick vote. Gary?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, where are we? We still don't have Keith, right?
I don't think he's going to be able to join us, so I don't know if you want to push it for a week, or you want us to speak to it.
We can push it. We have a meeting next week. Okay.
What, push the-
So, yeah, next on the agenda is the proclamation for Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day, which we're going to wait till next week, when Keith German can join us. Okay, next is the Climate Action Planning Committee update. We have Brad.
Yes, can I?
Did you want to have Russ before we do that, or not?
Do you want to, do you want to go next? Sorry, Brad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, come up, Brad.
You sure?
Yes.
Although I will try not to be.
If I could, Liz, just provide a little table setting.
Yes, please.
What we're hearing tonight is a reflection of a lot of works that actually stretches back to Town Meeting 2021, which set the town on a net-zero path, setting a goal, but also created the Climate Action Planning Committee, and, which is, was charged with creating a roadmap to help the town find that path forward. And with some financial support from HMLP and some consulting support that resulted, really helped the volunteer committee really pull something together that's, in my view, very impressive. I've been very excited, have entered into the process on the backside, and we're certainly excited to hear more tonight. I'd just like also, very briefly, to ask Ginny Leclair, our Sustainability Coordinator, to chime in on her role in all of this.
Yes, hi, I'm Ginny Leclair, Sustainability Coordinator/Consultant for the Town of Hingham and Cohasset, and it's really nice to join you tonight. This has been a collaborative process that has gone on for over a year, and I'm thrilled to be at this point where we are delivering you a plan. And it's been a long process, and Art asked me to just go over just a couple of things with you that I've been working on, some accomplishments for the Town of Hingham as a way of introducing myself to you. So I've been working with the Climate Action, the CED for about a year, reviewing the documents, supporting town staff, and attending meetings, and providing expertise, as well as conducting outreach. Recently, I have partnered with Hingham Net Zero and town staff for Newland Grassroots Environmental Fund grant, that we received $3,400 for a hydration station. We also partnered with Weir River Water Systems for this. I've been working on supporting Cleaner Greater Hingham in implementing the bottle bill, the bottle ban, and working on strategies with them, as well as the schools. And working with HMLP staff and board members for advancing solar in town, something that we hope that will bring to you in the next couple months. Real briefly, most recently, we refunded $10,000 through MAPC Technical Assistance through their Regional Energy Planning Assistance Grant Program to develop a net-zero strategy for municipal buildings. This is something that will coordinate really nicely with the launch of the Climate Action Plan, and enable us, through this technical assistance, to focus on our municipal buildings. I've also been working with the Energy Action Committee and town staff to update the Energy Reduction Plan, that was part of our Green Communities Award. And I've worked with Art and DOE R to submit our Green Communities Report, and have continued to monitor energy usage and mass energy insight, and we plan to apply for the next round of grant funding, which will be in the fall. And finally, I've been working with the town engineer and their consultants on a coastal resiliency grant program that we submitted recently, an application for the Hingham Harbor Shore Protection Alternative Analysis, preliminary design, and NIBA filings, including assessment of vulnerable water infrastructure. I supported the engineer, town engineer, and their consultants by gathering letters of support, resumes, and assisting with the narrative. There's many other things that I've been working on as well, and I hope to bring those to you once they get a little further along, but I'll hand it over to Brad now.
Excellent. Thank you, Ginny.
And Brad, I'll run the presentation, just let me know.
Perfect, thank you, Art. Before I jump right in, although I don't anticipate we'll have any deliberations this meeting, out of abundance of caution, we did post this also as a CAPC meeting. We do have a quorum in attendance. So it is 7:47, I'd like to call the meeting of the Climate Action Planning Committee to order. I note that we have Gary Tonodov-Dick, Elliot Place, Maria Zaid, Bob Hiddell, Carlos De Silva, and myself in attendance.
Excellent.
All right. So with that, first off, let me get, we owe many thanks. So let me get those out of the way. First, to the Select Board for your support over these many years, as well as town administration. This effort culminated after three years. It started with the Climate Action Task Force. Kathy Riordan, Maria Zaid, and I were tasked by Tom Mayo and town administration to come up with an approach for how do we come, develop a climate action plan, and through town meeting, the formation of this committee, and so forth. Here we are, and it's a very exciting moment for us. Just last Wednesday, on July 19th, the CAPC fulfilled its mission and formally adopted the Climate Action Plan, which we will go over tonight. I want to thank Art, who's been a fantastic partner, as well as Ginny, of course. Michelle and I go way back. She's always been great, and Tom as well. So it's been a fantastic partnership, and I'm very proud and pleased, and I can't tell you the last time I read a 145-page document from cover to cover and said, "This is actually good." So we're feeling pretty good.
Excellent.
So if you can go just to the agenda slide there, Art. So I just want to briefly touch on our mission and how we got here. Ginny touched a lot on some of the climate action successes, so you'll see a multi-bulleted slide there. We won't go through everything, but there are some things I want to highlight. I do want to talk through the emphasis on our public engagement, so that we all feel good that what's been produced tonight has not been produced in a vacuum, to say the least. And then we'll talk about what the plan does and what the plan doesn't do, and then we'll get into it itself. So with that, if we can just turn to the mission of the CAPC. So our mission from town meeting in 2021 is to evaluate a wide range of carbon emission reduction strategies, and then propose measures to achieve zero sum of carbon emissions by 2040, or another date deemed feasible, and that's what we are presenting to you tonight. The Climate Action Commission, which is the successor committee that was passed at this year's town meeting, has a bit of a broader remit, because it'll be in a continued existence until such time as we achieve net zero. And that's investigating, well, overseeing, supporting, and reporting on the plan itself, but then also investigating its feasibility and updating the cap accordingly, providing support to all the town committees and municipal government, working with businesses, residents, and organizations for education, and encouragement, and support, and then, of course, reporting out on the town's progress. So with the completion of our plan, we're now going to move into the formation of the Climate Action Commission. I understand that process is already underway through the talent bank, and then we've asked the other committees that are represented on the Climate Action Commission to start their appointments for that body. So, next slide, please. I noted we have a couple of things already that we mentioned, but one thing I want to highlight certainly is that first bullet. When we think about climate action work, I think a lot of folks see dollar signs. And there are dollar signs, but they go in both directions. There are expenditures, but there are also revenue-generating opportunities. And when you think we brought in $327,707 in revenue for committing to take certain actions, that's a big number. And it's a compounded number, because that number is used for efficiency measures, which save us even more money down the road. So we're always conscious of costs, and that is in the plan, and will continue through with its implementation. But like the presentation we just had from the planning board before us, I thought, I was pleasantly surprised. I'm like, I didn't realize we were doing so well, you know, against those measures. I hope everyone in this room and watching can also take from just some of the things we highlight on the slide, that Hingham is actually doing quite well in this area, and I don't know if people would necessarily appreciate that or think of that top of mind. It is no small point of pride to say that Hingham is a leader in the South Shore in this area, and five years ago, I wouldn't have said that. So I think we can feel very good with where we are. So let's move on to the next slide, then, with public engagement. So as I said earlier, I really want to highlight and emphasize the extent to which we wanted and solicited public input. No surprises. This is not a gotcha plan or anything of that nature. So we did a public survey, kept it open for about three months, went out to farmers' markets, EchoFest, and other places to try to grab responses. We got 362 responses. The summary of those are detailed in Appendix C in the plan. And then, from an engagement standpoint, we had 40 public meetings, three public engagement sessions presented to this body three times, three presentations to different town committees and other town bodies. We've gone out to community groups, we've done public events, and we've published articles as well, either from the committee or in partnership with many active citizens groups, particularly Hingham Net Zero. It's been a wonderful partnership, and we're very fortunate to have their efforts. So we did our best to get the word out, and more importantly, get the word in. So the plan reflects what individuals had to contribute and their desires and concerns. So now let's turn to the plan, the do's and the does-nots. So let me start with what it does not do, because I think people can be fearful or concerned with a plan like this. Number one is, doesn't obligate anyone to do anything. You know, we can't say, page 73, footnote 2, "Sorry, you committed to this." No, even if I wanted to, I don't have the authority. The committee doesn't have the authority. Really, what we're doing is laying out recommendations, you know, considerations and approaches. So anything that's in there will go through the normal town processes. There are no budgetary obligations that result. Everything will go through the normal budgetary process. It cannot and does not even try to supplant any town review or anything like that. Anything that would require a town meeting vote will go to a town meeting vote. And just as an aside, at this point in time, do not anticipate any need for warrant articles from this work next year. So we should be okay there for now. So what then does it do? So it's a call to action. And that sounds simplistic, but I don't want to minimize that, because it really lays out long-term thinking, what we need to have, what we can chip away at now, and what we need to start planning for down the road. It makes recommendations, asks all segments of Hingham, of the town, to consider what they can do to reduce carbon emissions. Some things are easy, some things not so easy. But again, that's why it's there, so we can plan for it. It is very cognizant of and focused on economics, and also changes in technology. Think of where we are today from where we were 10 years ago. Well, this plan has a 17, possibly longer life. We're shooting for 2040. If we can get there, great. If not, there's going to be a couple more years. So where might technology be another 10 years from now, another 17 years from now? So we recognize that that will change, and we're not signing any, went up to any specific technological approach. And then it's mandated continued refinement and growth. This is a living document. You know, getting 11 people to approve a 145-page document, I promise you, we said, "Doesn't have to be perfect, because it's going to be changed anyway." It's living, and we need to mind it and watch it. And the plan is very much cognizant of that. So with that, let's move into the plan structure itself. So I have here up at the top, I say it is deep but accessible. So what do I mean by that? So if you're approaching this as a citizen or a member of a public body, and it's like, "Really, I'm going to have to read 145 pages?", the answer is no. Love it if you did, but no. You can look, get the gist of it in six pages from its introductory letter and the executive summary. If you're not going to read anything else, perfect, six pages, you can manage. If you're like, "But I really want to know what it's going to want me to do," well, then you hop down to Appendix A, and that's 18 pages. But, you know, one of those is electricity supply. That's HMLP focus. You don't really have to focus on that so much. You still find what's going to be relevant for you and is digestible. And then there's the body of the plan that has about 73 pages, but even within that body, each section begins with a one-page call to action. So it's meant to be digestible, broken up, you don't have to read it in its entirety to understand what it's asking of you. And then lastly, too, we have the carbon inventory in Appendix B. So how do you know you're going to achieve net zero? How do you measure it? Well, that's our baseline. It's principally taken from 2020 data, because that's the most recent full set of data that we had. We do have some 2021 information in there as well. And then we have detailed spreadsheets with calculations, assumptions, all that wonderful stuff. stuff that's incorporated by reference into the plan, and we'll continue to track that over time. And of course, that'll be the role of the Climate Action Commission, along with the Sustainability Coordinator Consultant. So with that, if I can just hop you through the plan just a little bit, and then we'll go into questions. So Art, if you are able to bring that up. Great, thank you, Art. And if you don't mind, scroll down to the table of contents. You're going to see the introductory letter and the executive summary I mentioned up front in that. All right, so there are six contours of the plan. So that's six areas that we've targeted that either contribute to or can be a source for reducing carbon emissions in the town. So there is the electricity supply, which of course, as I said, is HMLP-focused. And I'll linger there for one second to just give a shout out to the wonderful work that HMLP has done, not only in providing funds to support the development of this plan for the consultant, but really, they are, again, when I say Hingham is a leader in this area, HMLP is kind of like a North Star in that regard, so we're very fortunate to have them and the great work that they have done. So the electricity supply will be focused on HMLP buildings. That's really where the action is. Most of, and you'll see from very accessible graphs in the town that show the source of carbon emissions, buildings is our principal one. Half the town is heated with oil. A substantial remaining portion, I believe it's, you know, I want to say 30-some percent, is natural gas. So when we think about the opportunity there to electrify, but even before we do that, to do energy efficiency measures, because whether it's fossil fuels, or renewables, or carbon-free, energy is energy. If you reduce its need, you reduce the expense and carbon output. So after buildings, we look at transportation. What opportunities are there to remove carbon? Transportation is an opportunity just to call out that when we look at measuring carbon that's been produced in Hingham, we look at what we can control. So you will have vehicles that originate outside of Hingham, pass through Hingham, get to the destination outside of Hingham. We're not going to shut down Route 3 if you're not driving an EV, you know? So it's what can we measure and control that's produced within Hingham, and that's what we focus. Waste, while waste does not contribute nearly as much carbon as the other categories, it is certainly there, and there are opportunities that we have where we can reduce the carbon impact from the waste that we produce. And then community and natural resources focus more on ways that we can get the community involved in reducing carbon or promoting those things that absorb carbon, carbon sinks. We're blessed with a lot of natural, beautiful wooded areas in Hingham. How do we continue to maintain those, increase those, and value those so that they can act as the great carbon sinks that they are? So after each of those contours, Art, if you could just scroll down a little bit further. Then we get into implementation. So how are we going to, like, who's impacted by this plan? Who has a call to action under this plan? And how do they go about implementing it, and how do we measure it? That's what that section is focused on. And then, and tracking the metrics is part of that as well. And then we move into the appendices I mentioned that get into the detailed action items, our carbon emissions summary, and then our community survey results, the public meeting list that I highlighted earlier. And then lastly, examples of grant and funding opportunities. As I mentioned at the outset, when we looked at the green communities, that $327,000 that we've brought in, there are lots of grants out there now. And what is listed there is just a sampling of the potential that's out there, and any implementation will be laser-focused on how to take advantage of those to the town's benefit.
Excellent.
That was a whirlwind. So there's a lot there, and I'll pause and happy to take any questions or focus anywhere you'd like.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Brad, and thank you to the entire committee. Certainly, it's a beautiful report. There's a lot of great work here, so thank you. And thank you Ginny and Art for supporting it. I certainly look forward to the implementation of it and learning more about the grant opportunities, too. That's certainly a focus. Do you have any initial reactions? It's a lot to digest.
First, thank you. It's tremendous. What is, maybe you've implicitly stated, but what I believe is incredible is the awareness in the community that has resulted from this work. And that's not measurable, but it's immeasurable in terms of actually bringing us closer to the goal. So huge achievement. I'm not sure to what extent you are aware of it, but you have really had an impact in terms of community awareness. So thank you for that. Is this available online as a PDF?
So it will be. So I haven't yet posted it to the town, but I will ask the town support desk to put it on the CAPC's webpage. Right now, we have a draft up there. We'll announce it as final, and it'll be easily accessible that way.
Because in terms of accessibility, people love to download, they want to search. They want to see what's there. And so having that available would be tremendous. I was going to ask you specifically about agriculture, which I know is not huge in Hingham. Rest of state, it really is a huge contributor of carbon emissions. To what extent is it an issue in Hingham, and is that something that we are looking to address?
Yeah, so we're certainly cognizant of it. In the Natural Resources section, there's actually a nice diagram there that talks about agriculture.
I didn't know if that was in the waste section or if it was in the...
We actually had some debates as to what should go where.
Okay.
But where we talk about how, you know, agriculture waste runoff, and it doesn't have to be agriculture, it can even be your own personal fertilizer that you're using, and if it enters the storm drain system, and then it flows into Hingham Harbor, you know, because the harbor also acts as a natural carbon sink. So when you have that runoff, how that contributes, and are there ways that we can look at to reduce, you know, excessive, you know, nitrogen fertilizing and things of that nature? So it's not going to be to a level of detail of agriculture in Hingham produces this many tons of carbon, and we must do X, Y, and Z immediately to reduce it by 20% of that. It doesn't get there, but it is aware of the issue, has it as a metric to track and actions to address it.
Great. And I've not studied this in detail, but are you looking at our EV charging stations, what is in place, what's currently in place, and suggestions for locations for future EV stations?
So that will definitely be part of the CAC implementation. So we acknowledge the great work that's been done to increase the number of EV charging stations already, just in the past year. I mean, it's been such a pleasant, I won't say surprise, but a pleasant outcome. So certainly, we look for and recommend more EV charging stations. That we will do in consultation with HMLP and town-owned properties, as well as private developers. There is a request to have, you know, look at opportunities when you see Derby Street, you know, in South Hingham and the shipyard. So we will certainly have that as a focus of the implementation.
Great. Nothing else. Thank you.
Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, yes. Thank you, Brad. I think that's a job. You and your entire committee did such great work here. Ginny, thank you for your update and welcome as well. Look forward to meeting on Thursday sometime, but thank you for your great work. Well, you know, one of the things, Brad, that I'm so impressed about your committee is just the passion that this group of residents had for this issue, and it certainly showed in the following reports, so thank you. But Brad, I do have a question for you. Looking for your advice here. One of the things I'm very concerned about as a select board member is the protection of our infrastructure as a cultural community from the impacts of climate change. You know, we are seeing unbelievably extreme weather the last couple of years. You know, Category 5 power gains are becoming common in the Southern Atlantic, and they're making their way further and further up the coast. Temperatures, you know, this past summer, I think it hit 115 in Phoenix the other day, calmly 107 in Texas. We're seeing the impacts here. I'm particularly concerned about rising sea levels and our ability to defend against that and protect our infrastructure, our roadways with 3A and two new projects coming up. Downtown corridor is very, very lucky jeopardy. Then we have sewer, a sewer operating system down there, businesses, residents. My question to you, Brad, what do you think we should start doing as a community to start defending against these impacts? Should we expand charter of your group to look into these issues, or do you think we should start kind of internally with the Select Board and kind of grow from there?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So when you look at the remit of what the CAPC was, our authority stems from town meeting, which was very focused on carbon reduction only. And so it is hard to have this conversation with not moving into resilience. And you'll find that that word is peppered throughout our plan, because even though we know we had to be focused on carbon reduction, resilience is still very much the other side of the coin. So we nod to it, we acknowledge it, but it wasn't in our direct remit. That being, and we did appoint to the municipal vulnerability study the town has done, the grants it has received in that area to acknowledge the work that's being done. Right now, the Climate Action Commission, again by town meeting warrant, is focused on implementing the carbon reduction strategies. So Bill, to your question, whether, your question was phrased, I think, the right way of, we would need to expand the Climate Action Commission's remit to take on that resilience component as well. Whether or not it should, I think, depends on the pre-existing efforts and what our current plans are. I think there could be a lot of synergies, and it makes a lot of sense to put those two efforts together. But it would have to be done thoughtfully, because you could easily favor one over the other, and the mission could get muddled and lost. So I guess what I'm saying, Bill, is I'm punting on your question. But it's a good one and something that I think we would definitely want to consider, and we should have more conversations about.
Great. Ginny, Brad, so you get how you work.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the committee or members of the public?
One comment.
Do you want to just come up here so they can hear you, Gary?
Gary, Town Northern Tech, 1029 Main Street. I just wanted to say and congratulate Brad for the wonderful leadership that he has shown in leading this disparate and very talented group of people to study this complex issue. And we started out with many different orbits, and I think everybody had a chance to participate and really get involved and offer their expertise. One thing I would offer, in, I've been at MIT, was on the Climate Change and Resiliency Committee, and basically, they've done, I would suggest that we look at a number of the reports that they've done. I'd suggest we look at what UMass Boston is doing, what the city of Boston is doing in terms of their efforts, because in terms of, there are kind of three fundamental approaches. One is to do nothing, which is not acceptable. The second is to build barriers, raise the contact point at the sea-level areas. And then the third is to increase natural porous infiltration kinds of areas like wetlands to allow the water to move. And then within that context, we have the rise in the ocean's level, we also have the storm surge issue. But as a companion to that, and we've seen it in the last month or so, we also have the rainfall surge, which is creating an amazing amount of water flowing into our area. And so, I mean, I think that it's a great question that Bill raised. I think it's something that I love to participate in, kind of looking at those impacts relative to those opportunities in terms of the town, so. Great, thanks again.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
I see Bob right there. Okay. I see you, Bob. I'm going to let Elliot speak since he's in the room, and then we'll go to you.
Elliot Place, 91 Kimball Beach Road, member of the Climate Action Planning Committee and also Hingham Net Zero. The first thing I want to say is what an incredible collaboration this has been with you folks, you know, and with many different groups in the town. HMLP has often had two people at all our meetings, you know? And just amazing to me. So I want to say thank you to everyone, because we never would have gotten here because of that, without that. The other thing is an answer to Joe's question about agriculture. We considered many different aspects of source of carbon emissions outside and inside the town. And in one part of the introductory part, you'll see a differentiation of those things. But embodied carbon is huge. Agriculture in our country represents a very high percentage of carbon emissions, although not so much in Hingham, but it's an embodied carbon footprint every time we eat meat. That happens outside, but it is something we must consider. All the building materials, all the transportation of everything here is also a carbon footprint, you know, embodied carbon footprint. So it's something that we can't really measure inside the town, but we must be aware of it. The other thing is with regard to what Bill Ramsey brought up, the difference between adaptation to climate change, resilience, as Brad mentioned, is a very different and huge challenge than, that's very different than, the source of carbon emissions. And both of them require real focus in their own, you know, sense. So I would be very wary of conflating the two. And I think that we need to really focus in one group on the sources of carbon emissions. And I think there needs to be a separate group that focuses on adaptation to carbon change.
Great point. Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Bob. Hello.
Brad, thank you for your leadership. It's been superb. You helped us together in moments of plastic bar awareness. But in any case, I want to address Bill Ramsey's question, because it is as vital as the issue we face dealing with the carbon reduction. I'm not going to say net zero. I have too much science background to encourage that, but we can make a huge dent here at Hingham. The issue of the harbor, when I was working as a liaison with the, as a conservation commission member, working with the harbor development committee to build a new wall and such that was going on, that is a challenge so distant in many respects from what we deal with the carbon, because we're dealing with a geotechnical condition that is going to cost just for, let's say, the Boston metropolitan area around to the Cape, billions and billions of dollars. And we will not be able to handle that alone. There are a lot of issues as the sea level rises, and you're concerned about the infrastructure. It's a big deal. It's become a big deal already, and one of the reasons I'm not sitting there with you all, I had to drive home in that short, intense rainfall. Get used to it, folks, but our infrastructure, our drainage systems, our road systems are not able to handle what you saw tonight. And I was just coming from my office. So I think if, and I'm saying this to our colleagues, the selectmen persons, we really need to form a very specific... need to form a very specific committee in this town to oversee this task of the geotechnical issues that we face with rising sea levels, protect as much of the infrastructure as we can. And of those of you that remember my comments regarding the placement of the Foster School, well, Gary and I had coordinated our comments, those kinds of things don't help us in this issue of, of addressing rising sea level. But our forecasting for our clients, see, the sea level rise along this coast happening a lot faster than many other locations along the North American coast or perhaps not as great as Asia. We need to form that committee now. I would encourage the selectmen to do that as soon as possible and get us organized. We, our time is running out here. And besides, I only have 17 years until I hit 100. So I intend to be around to 100. After that, I'll probably change disciplines or something. But at the end of the day, each of you need to get us moving in that direction. Get a long-range committee, not a planning committee, a long-range committee to begin to address the immediate needs, identify short-term, long-term, and start the process. I mean, I'm saying this, I'm cheering you on, but we need to do that now. We cannot wait. That sounds like a lesson. Thank you all very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
And thank you for coordinating a lot with us on the climate action planning. A great report, does exactly what we were told to do. And I know Brad's proud of it, I'm proud of it. All of us sitting in that room with you are proud of it. So thanks so much, but let's get this other thing going too.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Ginny, did you want to add a comment?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to, to real quick mention that one of the grants that I was talking about that I, that I worked on with, with the town engineer and both engineering was for just that, it was a coastal resiliency grant that was looking at all the things that Mr. Ramsey just mentioned and it's, we're hoping to have funding so that we can do an in-depth engineering analysis of how to protect Hingham Harbor shorelines as well as looking at the wastewater infrastructure. So we'll find out about that, this ACZF grant, and hopefully that can, you know, help address a lot of these questions and concerns that, that we have. The mandate of this plan was an energy reduction plan. It was not a resiliency plan. So it really looks at how can we reduce our carbon emissions.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you, Brad, and the entire committee. It's, it's a great plan and I am confident that we will implement it. It will not sit on a shelf. And as you said, it's a living document, so I hope we continue. I'm sure this conversation will continue and we'll make adjustments along the way. And certainly, we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of carbon neutrality as well as resiliency, so. But thank you. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
All right.
If there's anything really, okay. CAPC, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, to consider the request of the Weir River Water System to install and maintain approximately 55 feet of 12-inch ductile iron pipe in Thaxter Street, approximately 2,123 feet of 12-inch ductile iron pipe and 225 feet of 12-inch HDPE pipe in Downer Avenue, approximately 72 feet of 8-inch ductile iron pipe in Park Circle, approximately 1,376 feet of 8-inch ductile iron pipe in Planters Field Road, and approximately 590 feet of 8-inch ductile iron pipe in Crow Point Lane. Thank you for being so patient.
You didn't call Matt off.
Oh, my apologies. Just took a minute. Before you begin, I have to depart from meeting. I have another obligation, but thank you, Liz and Joe, everybody for great meeting. I hope everybody has a good rest of the day. Take care.
Thank you, Bill.
Bye, Bill.
All right. Russ, you want to take us through this?
Sure. So the work that we're proposing will be done, we put the contract out and voted for it tonight at the Board of Water Commissioners' meeting. It covers Downer Ave., as Liz just pointed out, from Lincoln Street to Governor Long, Governor Long right now. We are going to continue it onto Otis Street due to some paving concerns with the DPW, so we're actually having that designed now. We'll do it as a, as a change order to the contract. This is part of our capital study improvements in the new Foster, to help the new Foster School with their flows and their need for fire service protection. Planters Field Lane is also being done as part of the capital study improvement for improved hydraulics in the area that's Downer Ave. to Wampatack. And Crow Point Lane is being done from Lincoln Street to Candido Way. Because of break history, we've had about, I think, four to five breaks since I've gotten here in 2020. That line needs to be replaced. So we're asking the board to grant us, grant us this.
Excellent. And I know that citizens or residents have been notified. I don't see anyone on here, but.
Yeah, I'm going to do another notification tomorrow because I held off to make sure everything got approved before we really put everything out there.
Okay.
But tomorrow morning, I will go right in and make sure everybody's well aware of what's going on.
Okay.
How do you do that? How do you?
We do it through the Waters notification system.
Is that a phone call?
It'll be both, phone call and email. Anybody that's signed up, if, you know, we have to get people that are in those areas if they want to be updated on the progress of the construction and have any other questions, you need to get signed up through, through Veolia to our notification system, so.
I know we, we talked about this at the Board of Water Commissioners' meeting, but this is obviously needed. We know that there's issues in this area of town and certainly with the construction of the new Foster School, this is, this has become quite critical, so.
Correct. And replacing this, because this water main actually has broken three times since I've been here. And the increased size will increase hydraulics all the way from Otis Street all the way into the shipyard. So it's a really good addition to the system.
Yes.
And upgrade.
Great. Do you have any other questions?
I have no questions. This is clearly, need to be done.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Matt want to comment?
I did, just in terms of funding, is this all within our budget, Russ?
Yes. Yep, it's all within the budget. I had estimated it at 1.9 million and it came in at 1.748, so.
Okay. I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to approve the request of the Weir River Water System to install and maintain approximately 55 feet of 12-inch ductile iron pipe in Thaxter Street, approximately 2,123 feet of 12-inch ductile iron pipe and 225 feet of 12-inch HDPE pipe in Downer Ave., approximately 72 feet of 8-inch ductile iron pipe in Park Circle, approximately 1,304 feet of 8-inch ductile iron pipe in Planters Field Lane, and approximately 590 feet of 8-inch ductile iron pipe in Crow Point Lane. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated July 24th, 2023.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Do I need to say Bill's name? No, great.
Nope.
Okay. Liz? Aye. It passes. Not quite. Sort of unanimously. Two out of three. It's unanimous out of the two that are here. Okay. Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, guys.
All right, you can finally go. Thank you. Have a good night.
See you later.
Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Hingham Recreation Commission School Committee and Select Board regarding the townwide field maintenance program. I believe Art is going to present this one.
Yes, thank you. This item before you, this memorandum of understanding, simply commits to paper an understanding that was created several years ago between the Recreation Department, the School Department, School Committee, and the Select Board to ensure effective and efficient and fiscally responsible management of the town's athletic fields as follow-up to a recommendation from a Weston and Sampson field study that recommended that there be a single point of contact to manage our, our fields and to ensure that they're, they're best maintained. The MOU before you pretty much lays out in, in some detail the roles for the Recreation Department, the School Department, as well as the Select Board in terms of tasks to complete, financial contributions to be made, and more importantly, to document this, this collaboration. I think we saw a need for putting this to paper, given some turnover in, in the School Department over the past year and a half or so. And with getting it to paper, getting all, all governing boards and committees to, to sign on to it, we'll ensure that it will stay in place as long as all, all parties agree. I'm happy to address any questions. I think I, I would also note that the School Committee and the Recreation Commission have voted to sign on to this document.
Excellent. Thank you, Art. I just want to know, I, I was involved in the documenting of this, so I am intimately familiar with the details. And to Art's point, it's a system that is working very, very successfully, and so we wanted to be sure to, to document it. This is not coming out of an issue. This is actually kind of codifying and documenting some, a system that is working really well. So happy to, happy to see this down on paper for, to live on. Do you have any questions?
I do, and I just don't know if it's incomplete. If you look at the second page, the last sentence of the top paragraph begins, "The town administrator will also include a DPW representative." Seems to drop off. I think there's the rest of the sentence that has been omitted, and I don't know what's intended to be there.
I recall the intent of that was to include a DPW representative as needed.
Yes.
On, on the task force.
Correct.
So the town.
Do you have the electronic version, Art?
I'm, I'm looking for that now.
And am I correct, Liz, that the budgetary impacts in terms of the various parts of town government that are responsible for funding this, that's not being changed by this MOU?
Correct.
With, with what we have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Art, did you find that?
I do have it in PDF format, if you'd like to. If you could just read. See that.
This, the last sentence, that sentence there, it seems to be.
Yeah, I see it.
But is there something that's supposed to be there that I don't see, or?
In this version that I have, it is, the sentence is not complete.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
But the intention is the town administrator will also include a DPW representative as needed on the task force? Is that conceptually?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
I apologize for that.
No, I mean, from what I hear, this is getting rave reviews and appreciate all the work here. I have no other questions.
Okay. Any members of the public have questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to auth, to approve and to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign the memorandum of understanding regarding the field maintenance program between the Hingham Recreation Commission School Committee and Select Board in the form attached here too.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And a aye and aye as well. That passes. All right. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Specialty Vehicles Incorporated for an ambulance for the fire department. Do we have Chief Murphy with us? And Kathy Riley?
Steve, his name. I can start if you want.
Okay, sure. That'd be great.
Okay. The contract that we're asking you to approve tonight is from a cooperative, and we bought our last ambulance from them, so it's really kind of not that different than the last one that was approved, I believe, was in 2022. And it has a really long lead time, so Steve Murphy wanted to get it going and get the contract signed and get it into order. But Steve, you want to talk about the ambulance?
Yeah, so actually, this would be the third ambulance that we've actually purchased from Specialty Vehicles. The first one was a, and this was a Ford ambulance, Ford chassis. The first one was offered in 2019. We bought another one in 2021, and now we're buying one, which coincides with our plan that we developed a few years ago to purchase a new ambulance over two years. In this case, as Kathy said, unfortunately, the lead times are kind of excessive. One thing that we have been able to do, though, is that many of the vendors will take a quote unquote preorder type of thing that will, you know, notify them that, you know, all intents and purposes will probably be purchasing one and they're first in queue. And that's already happened. We actually kind of gave them that heads up, there's no commitments to the town or anything else, and they know that if we don't buy it, then someone else will, because there's so many customers out there looking for them. So we are, we've been told that there's a chance that instead of the typical 18 monthly time that we're looking at, that we might see the ambulance at the end of this calendar year, if not the beginning of next calendar year, because we kind of, you know, got our names in queue so long ago, so.
Great. Thank you, Chief. And I think I'm correct that this is, this has been budgeted for, right, in FY24 capital?
Correct. Yes.
All right, great. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, and so the pricing, which is about a half a million, is that consistent with what we should expect to be paying?
Yeah, unfortunately, we've really seen a very steep increase in pricing over the last, you know, number of years. And I know some chiefs that are just ordering the trucks now that, you know, weren't in queue for this, and they're already over $500,000. So it's unfortunate. I want to say that, you know, probably eight, 10 years ago, we were still in the $300,000 range, so it's crazy how quickly these are going up now. So one thing with this, and I don't remember if I've mentioned this to you guys beforehand, but we have had conversations with Tom and Michelle regarding, and actually with advisory regarding keeping the old ambulances as well. Typically, the last truck we sold, the town sold at auction and we got $16,000 for it. And, you know, for $500,000 for an ambulance, it just does not make any sense. So we currently have four ambulances, two of which are primaries, they're in service all the time, and two are reserved trucks. We would like to keep this one as a third reserve truck. And then, you know, that way we may be able to look at our two-year purchase purchasing plan and maybe see if we can extend it or whatever the case, but it just doesn't make any sense to, you know, trade this in or try to sell it out outright for the minimum amount that they give us, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Questions or comments from members of the public? I think it's the Mr. Carr.
Sorry, wait a minute.
You are. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to break our tuning to pedal drive, I'm just curious whether we can consider whether there's a possibility of doing electric vehicle for that ambulance?
I'm not aware of any electric ambulances yet. The, I know there's a few, believe it or not, electric fire trucks that have just started within the last few years, but I have not seen anything on electric ambulance yet. Part of the problem with these vehicles is there's so much plugged into them, you know, there's between the radio monitors and all the radios and everything else. I'm actually going to a national conference in a few weeks and I will take a look to see if there are any, but I'm not aware of any that have really hit the market yet.
Okay, just given the climate action plan, it'd be interesting to at least make inquiries about it.
Yeah.
Definitely. Thank you.
And I did have one, one further question.
Sure.
Once we receive this ambulance, are there additional fittings that will need to be put on, additional work? Will, will it come with all the bells and whistles and lights that we need or additional expenditures will be required?
No, so we're actually budgeted. I don't have the exact amount in front of me, but there is, yes, to answer your question, basically the vehicle comes pretty much as it's painted out and everything is ready to go. go. The only thing that we will do is we buy smaller things, like, you know, little shelf, not shelves, but little like storage bins to keep some stuff in the truck and, you know, some smaller equipment. But this, the purchase price does include this stretcher, which is one of the more expensive things, and also some other things like what's called a spare chair, which is about a $5,000 ride, and the stretcher's about a $17,000, $18,000 ride. So those are all included. It will include the radios, everything else. So they will spend probably, I want to guess, about $3,000 on small, affordable equipment, new bags and stuff like that to put into it. But we do that on our own after we take delivery of the vehicle.
So there's no material customization after, after you receive it?
No.
Great. That's...
No, that's where, so, so Specialty does all of that for us.
That's great.
They buy the chassis from Ford, and then they do the outfit and the lights. And, you know, there's actually federal regulations that they have to comply with and state regulations and all that, so they, they handle all of that.
Yep. And then, just in response to the last question, looking online, you'll see there is the Deamer's EFX all-electric ambulance that is coming available. So that's just something we can, we can look at in the future.
Yep.
Excellent. I'm ready to take a motion, if you're ready.
I am. I move to, make sure I'm getting the right one. I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Specialty Vehicles Inc. for a 2023 Ford F-550, four-by-four diesel engine, Lifeline Superliner type IAD, Class 1 Emergency Medical Vehicle, in an amount not to exceed $477,957.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Jet Dock Systems for a 32-foot floating dock for the Harbor Master. We're actually, I'm going to push that till our meeting next week on August 1st, when Harbor Master Corson can join us. Okay, next on the agenda is to sign the collective bargaining agreements with Teamsters Local 25, effective July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, and effective July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. Michelle, you going to walk us through this?
Sure. So back in February, the board reviewed and approved the memorandum of agreement with the Teamsters Union. This is our DPW staff. And at that, so at that time, all of the changes went into effect. This is now the procedural step of actually having the terms that were agreed to in the memorandum of, of agreement worked into the actual collective bargaining documents. So there are two CVAs here, one for a one-year period, the second for a three-year period. These have been reviewed by our labor attorney and, and agreed to by the union and signed by them. So it's just now for the Select Board to consider signing these agreements.
Excellent. And I understand there's no material difference. It's really just incorporating all the changes into the CPA.
That's right.
Okay. Excellent. Do you have any questions, Joe?
I don't. You told me that our council is reviewed and they're fine with this. Then I've got no questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to sign the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 25, effective from July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
And I move to sign the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 25, effective from July 1, 2022, through June 30 of 2025.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Next on the agenda are appointments. I believe we have one?
Yes, and, and has Bill, right, okay.
Yes, Bill.
So I move to appoint Judith Sneeth to the Hingham Public Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment or question of something we have not covered on this extensive agenda?
We've covered a lot.
Okay, seeing none. Town Administrator and Select Board reports. Do you want to start, Michelle?
Sure. Just quickly, on behalf of Tom, since he's not here tonight, we wanted to report out the four liquor licenses, one-day liquor licenses that he's approved through the new process. So there are four upcoming events. One is Hingham Summer Fest on South Street. This is Untold Brewing on July 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then there are three sunset picnics with Barrel House Z at Weir River Farm. These will be held on July 27th, August 3rd, and August 10th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. All of these are listed on the town website, so people can see what's coming up.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Art?
Just, if I may, just to round out the range of issues that, that we can touch on in the meeting, I just want to share that today was our kickoff day for a series of Food Truck Tuesdays here at Town Hall, trying something different to make, make some options available for folks who are here for our very long Tuesdays, and hopefully build some camaraderie and get, offer folks a chance to enjoy the, the summer a bit. We had our first truck here today called Mom on the Go. I think we, many of us had a chance to really enjoy the grilled cheese options. They're all very impressive, very filling, very satisfying. And we're looking to do this with different providers, you know, over the, the next month, month and a half or so. And special thanks are due to Susan Sarni, who, her team permits the food trucks, had the relationships that we could leverage to, to put this together.
Excellent. It sounds like it was a big success.
Well, we were certainly out there. We certainly saw quite a few people stepping up over the course of the, the time the truck was here, and we're looking forward to more of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Joe?
Nothing this evening.
And I don't have anything either. But thank you, everyone. This was a long meeting and a lot of work that went into it before we got here, so thank you. I'm ready to take a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an, an aye as well. We are adjourned, 8:45 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.